All right, we ready? Join me in pledging allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a moment's prayer. All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
I do. There's, you're voting on a policy for public comment?
Yes.
And, and the thing is, I think it's, I don't think it's, it respects people's right to speak because if people are given two minutes to speak and if they, if they, if they say just speak for 15 seconds, then they're, they're no longer allowed to speak. And, cause they, uh, cause they've used up, they're no longer allowed to speak, they've used up their public comment period, even though it's not the full two minutes. So then, so if somebody else in the meeting, somebody else from the audience brings up a topic that, that they want to speak on, they can't speak on it. So, and they may, they really might have something to say. And, and so you've really limited their ability to address important public comments, pub, top, public topics. And as a member of the press, I would be interested in hearing what everybody might want to say on, on this second public, um, topic that comes up. So, yeah, that's my, that's what I think.
Excellent. Thank you, James.
If I have comment, I think I'm gonna do it. Uh, Walter Woods, Canton Township. Um, I'm gonna first address the speakers during public comment and people in the audience must refrain from abusive or profane remarks and slanderous, personal attacks. Um, that's first off a First Amendment violation and I'm gonna ignore it and maybe pay more attention to that fact. Um, it, there's a lot of mistakes in this that cannot go forward. Uh, whoever drafted it didn't know what they were doing, in my opinion. Uh, public, public comment is limited to a maximum of two minutes per individual, per public comment period. I haven't found any case where two minutes even closely seemed to be reasonable. Uh, and you're talking about two minutes for every board that you may have going at the same time, which is not permitted. Uh, I haven't brought this up before, but you have to close out your board meeting and when you start your next board meeting, open that up. So you're supposed to have a public comment period for each board, which is, I believe today, six minutes worth of public comment period. Uh, if you're not gonna be closing them out, you're supposed to, but if you're not be closing them out, you're gonna have to provide six minutes at the beginning, two for each board. Uh, it's very clearly spelled out in the Sunshine Act how it works. Agency is not just Bradford County. Agency also includes each board and committee. Uh, it says nothing herein shall operate to preclude citizens from applying outside the public comment period of any public meeting, meaning outside public comment period of during the public meeting, to those invested with the powers of governance. That's used for redress of grievances or other proper proposes of petition, address.
All right, Walter. Thank you. The time has expired.
You actually didn't set one for the other person that had spoken, so I don't know how you could set a timer for me. And you've always allowed public comment to go on for more than two minutes at the beginning. Um, and this hasn't been passed yet. Uh, this actually says-
We're, we're, we're gonna move on for now. So, thank you.
And you're gonna provide two minutes for each board?
We're gonna provide what we have to provide by the statute.
Oh, so you will provide two minutes for each board, then?
We're not gonna get into this discussion, so.
You're also stopping me from-
I'm running the meeting.
That would be the first, but, so you're forcefully stopping me from speaking on this subject, even though you didn't forcefully stop anybody else?
Your time has expired. Unfinished business?
Is there anybody else on the agenda?
Not for-
Okay, I just didn't know if there was anybody else for the agenda.
I think the chair, I wonder if she knew that. I'll make a motion approving minutes again in 2023, 2025.
Second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to say, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business. Consider a motion to ratify action taken on January 9, 2025. Since our last meeting, the commissioners have become aware that despite formal action taken at our December 26, 2024 meeting to advertise all 2025 meeting dates, there was a delay in publication due to an administrative oversight. As a result, our meeting schedule was not published in the newspaper. Before our meetings held on, in January of 2025, all other notice and posting requirements were met.
Make a motion to accept that.
Second, and I just have a question. The reference in here is it says before our meetings, it was not published in the newspaper before our meetings held in January 2025. Was that for all meetings or when, so when was the date of publication? That, when did it ultimately get published?
Well, it was February 7th. Fourth.
February 4th. So, I guess the question I have is, is the motion right now is to ratify action taken on January 9?
We advertised the January 26 meeting location and time.
Separately?
Separately.
And then the other ones for the future meetings were advertised on February 4?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's only, so when it says it was not published in the newspaper before our meetings held in January, I guess when it says our meeting schedule is just referring to the future ones for February and forward. But the only formal action would be to rat, ratify the January 9 because there had been publication of things relative to the January 26 meeting, is that-
Yeah.
Or am I doing my math correctly? January 23 meeting?
Yeah.
So it's just, the only one that needs to be ratified is just that?
Yeah.
That probably went over all this. Question should've been done when we went over.
I, I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Well, we should've got a little clearance right on there.
All right, we have a motion to say, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider approving a resolution 2025-01 Public Participation Policy for Meetings.
Make that motion.
Second. And I just-
A motion to second?
Yep.
Further discussion?
Yeah. So, first of all, I just wanna clarify, I think there's a word missing in section three, uh, Roman three, subpart two, A. The second to last line of that, we're just reading pertinent border committee has the opportunity, I think the word two should be in there, to utilize the feedback. I think that was just a stenographic error.
You wrote a lot of that, Zach.
Yep, and I admit when I need to make a mistake, so I'm just trying to clear that up. The other piece of this would be, um, I guess I would make a subordinate motion to amend, to add a section regarding severability. So it would be a motion, I'd make a motion to amend the proposed resolution number 2025-01 to add a new section, sub, uh, Roman four, to read as follows. Quote, Roman four severability, period. If any provision of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstances is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of the resolution, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application. And to this end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be severable. Period, unquote. That's my motion.
So we're inside, I'll second that motion.
Second the motion.
Are we doing this correctly?
Yes.
Yep.
So we have a motion to second to amend-
Correct.
The current policy that's on the table.
Yep.
So all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we allowed now? Is there a comment on that before you go?
No, no.
And then this, so-
All in favor signify by saying aye. We said aye, passes unanimously. All right.
Okay, thank you. So then, back to the, back to this policy. So, a few sort of observations. Um, the first page, there's been a lot of discussion earlier in my term about the issue of what is a meeting, what is not a meeting. Proposed footnote one is, is intended to address that, to help explain what is and is not a meeting, consistent with, um, concerning the Supreme Court jurisprudence and interpretation of the Sunshine Act. Section through two, Roman two sets forth a statement of authority, um, and the reasons pursuant to which this can be adopted, or at least the statutory provisions pursuant to which these can be adopted. And then the rules governing meetings are sort of classed. One is on public comment and participation, um, recording of meetings, and then explaining the different comment periods. Um, I would say, you know, we can certainly ask the solicitor to speak, but I think the goal here is, is to provide clarity and to provide some manner of order so that meetings don't become a back and forth unnecessarily, and that there's some manner in which things can be presented. And if there's things that we need to take up later, we can do that in terms of getting answers to citizens. We'll have a mechanism, a clear mechanism to do that. Um, but, you know, the, the hope, the expectation is, is that far from curtailing people's ability to speak, that this provides a clear manner to prevent unnecessary back and forth. So, I guess I turn it over to Jonathan. Do you have any observations on this that you'd like to share?
Yes, and, and ultimately, the purpose of this policy is for meetings to run in an orderly and efficient manner, um, while balancing certainly the public's interest of being able to comment. And, and I should make it clear that nothing prevents any member of the public from ever writing a letter to the commissioners or raising any other concerns. What, what we don't want is that this isn't an opportunity for public grandstanding or for someone to get clicks and likes on a YouTube channel. Ultimately, what this is about is if people are allowed to participate in our government, we certainly want any concerns raised, but we're not gonna, we don't want to get off the rails and back and forth, um, and get in the weeds as far as that goes. So, um, that's ultimately what we're looking to do is, is to adopt a policy consistent with all of the laws in Pennsylvania, um, balancing efficiently running meetings as well as people's interest in commenting on matters of public importance.
And I would say that people can make comments arguably for whatever purpose they want. It's just that people will be held, you know, within reason to the same standards. And, you know, one of the things would be that when, if there's a question posed or there's an interruption, that we're clear on not counting that time against a speaker's, um, time allotted time, that, that we do that. And I think that that's-
And I also should note that this was developed in a bipartisan manner, that all of the commissioners were involved, and I worked with Commissioner Gates in developing this policy. So I wanted to be clear that this is 100% bipartisan as far as that goes, that it's not, it doesn't relate to one political side or the other.
I would, I would say that, that if you look at, I mean, if you look at this sort of collectively, this is modeled off of Athens Burrows, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is modeled off of Athens Burrows with some additions from other, I think a portion on decorum may have come from the City of Lancaster's policy, and the position on recording was drawn from a policy, um, I think at a university. So it's just the idea that there's, there's some thought put into this.
Exactly. And-
And arguably, this, this invests the discretion within, if, if somebody needs to be, you know, if they're 30 seconds over or whatever, the chair has the authority to say, let's, you know, you're over time, let's wrap it up, et cetera, right? But they also have the ability to ensure that at a given period, at a given meeting, that different, everybody gets a chance, um, to talk, right?
Exactly.
All right. Any further comments? If not, all in favor of adopting the policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the second quarter report for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program.
Make that motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion to second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider approving a $35,819, 28 cents agreement between Bradford County and Ant Global Strategies for Professional Services from January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion?
Just for clarity's sake, um, Michelle, this is for the expense tracking system for the 911?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Ant Global Strategies for the generator maintenance at the Public Safety Center effective January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025 in the amount of $19,786.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Ant Global Strategies for microwave 24/7 support, maintenance and software upgrades at the Public Safety Center effective January 1, 2025 through December 3, 31, 2025 in the amount of $53,835.14.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Ant Global Strategies for services and maintenance of dual network GOS time clocks at the Public Safety Center effective January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025 in the amount of $3,756.76.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Ant Global Strategies for the service and maintenance of voice recorder at the Public Safety Center effective January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025 for $7,760.84.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Ant Global Strategies for the Z-tron console maintenance at the Public Safety Center effective January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025 in the amount of $53,893.70.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Bradford County Parks and, and regulation, parks regulations for the 2025 camping season.
So moved. Second. And my understanding is there's not, there's not a change, it's not a change in rate or anything, correct? It's everything is the same as 2024?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the renewal of an agreement between Bradford County and Larry Akla as park supervisor for the Sunfish County Park, County Park for the 2025 park season.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, we wanted to, Larry Akla is doing an outstanding job up there, and we thank him for continuing to do this on our behalf.
He loves that.
You took, you took the words out of my mouth. Thank you, Daryl.
So we have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving the renewal of an agreement between Bradford County and Lynda Keeney as the park supervisor for Hornbrook County Park for the 2025 park season.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second, and I will reiterate the same thing I said about Larry. Lydia does an outstanding job over there. I mean, she, she goes way above and beyond maintaining that park over Hornbrook for, for all of us, so we thank her for, for that.
She mows the whole thing, too. And Libby is what she's known as, but she, uh, stay out of the way when she's on that mower.
She loves mowing lawn. Anyway, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise for the Bridge 15 construction project.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second, any further discussion? I will say that's the bridge in Stevens Township that we're, we're kind of disheartened to see the old bridge go because it's an old laid up stone bridge, but we need a new bridge there, and so we're gonna put a new bridge in its place.
And Duane, you have all the plans on that, if anybody has any questions, correct?
I didn't bring them today, but I do have them at the office.
Okay.
It's on Cold Creek Road, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's on Cold Creek Road, it's Neely Road.
Well, it's right close to Cold Creek.
Yeah, if you go up Cold Creek, you're gonna see it.
It's kinda right there at the intersection of those.
Correct, sir.
It runs from 706 all the way up to the Eric Bell Road, which is quite a ways, actually.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement with Johnson Controls for the fire alarm system at the Bradford County Correctional Facility and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-02 authorizing Brian Farr as the designated agent to execute for and on behalf of Bradford County, and to submit all required forms and documents to obtain financial assistance for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion?
And he's, Brian, of course, is our new emergency management coordinator, yes, for the county.
He's doing a pretty, pretty good job so far, too.
Yes, he is. So we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider amending the agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Concerned Professional effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a purchase of service agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Little Stars Consulting LLC effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford County Solid, Bradford Sullivan Drug and Alcohol Single County Authority and Evolve Addiction Recovery effective February 1, 2025 through June 30, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford Sullivan Mental Health and the Main Link effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a payment of $20,000 to Learn Design for Grant Application Consultancy for the fiber project being overseen by the Progress Authority.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, that's our BEAT application for some federal monies to pull down through the BEAT program, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so Matt, the idea was you contracted with Learn Design on behalf of Progress Authority for this grant consultant to assist, basically hope, with the hope to strengthen the application to go in for the BEAT funds.
Correct, yes. The BEAT program, because of the technical nature that was involved with compiling the application, and the fact that somehow the Commonwealth managed to fit four federal holidays in the application, would have required some significant coordination. LDA was very highly recommended by our contacts at the Keystone Internet Coalition and the University of Pittsburgh Data Center. They've leveraged over a billion dollars nationwide on BEAT programs across the country. So, that was fine.
And we want to thank you and everybody down there for all the work you've done on that. T and everybody, cause I mean, you've got, I believe, 100% participation from municipalities in support of that application.
Correct. All 51 municipalities in Bradford County passed resolutions in support of our application. So this is our, our less, our, our best chance yet to secure funding to address the remaining unserved and underserved locations within the county.
Correct. And that was no small feat, getting that done. That was, that was quite a challenge to get all that put together and get everybody on board, but hopefully we have good, good application and we can receive some funds to help continue the project.
I don't think there's another rural county in Pennsylvania that's even close to what we've done.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's why I would hope that we get funding from this, because there's, there's no, none other like us, and they could use our county and the work that we've all done as a template, right?
Right. And that's what we heard in our coordination with, with KIC and U-Pet Data Center, was when they saw what we had done with commissioners I committed to already, we were miles and miles ahead of other regions in, in the state that are putting in similar applications.
Are there any other rural counties hanging fiber?
Not as of now.
It'd be a shame if we don't get it. It's gonna be another lie from the government, in my opinion. So I hope, I hope we, I hope, all the work you guys have done, I hope we get it.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion?
I want to, I hope our residents get it, our rural residents. Thank you, Matt.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the hires and transfers from Karina Huff down through and including Sam Sacks. Motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Other business, Kristen Kissinger, Kissinger has been appointed in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas to the position of Administrative Assistant One for the Court of Common Pleas in the Office of Probation effective February 3, 2025. And an executive session was held on February 4, 2025 from 8:28 to eight, or yeah, from 10:28 to 10:38 to consult with county solicitor regarding information or strategy concerning litigation or issues on which identifiable complaints were expected to be filed.
I believe the litigation referenced here is the pending lawsuit from the Bradford County, or friends of the Bradford County Library, just for clarification.
And an executive session was held on February 4, 2025 from 3:25 to 3:40 to discuss personnel issues concerning terms and conditions of employment. Now, Salary Board, we have Matt Allen, our treasurer, is a member of the Salary Board. There is no unfinished business, we will set the grades and salaries from Karina Huff down through and including Rhea Blair.
I'd like to point out a Sunshine Act violation, as you haven't allowed public comment for this salary board.
Excuse me, it's not public comment.
No, this is a Sunshine Act violation statement I'm making. Could I finish it, please?
No, you can't.
Mr. Chairman, I think just it's duly noted for the record that Mr. Woods has alleged Mr. Chairman, I think just, it's duly noted for the record that Mr. Woods has alleged a violation of the Sunshine Act on the basis of regarding the comment period. And so the, the record is.
He can file a violation, he can file suit.
He's, he's also entitled by law to make, even if we may disagree with it, he's permitted by law to raise it in a public meeting. It's duly noted for the record. Thank you.
Make that motion for the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. Thanks, Matt.
Assessment Board, there's no unfinished business concerning approving, excuse me?
That there's no public comment.
Excuse me?
For the assessment.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, the, the record is reflected that there's been an allegation of a Sunshine Act violation. Again, whether we agree with it or not is not the issue. It's been made. It's been duly noted for the record.
Unfinished.
Are we doing it correctly?
Yes, we are doing it correctly as far as that goes.
We're just noting it for the record.
Exactly. So that, so it'll be on the meeting minutes that it's noted.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. There is no unfinished business. New business, consider approving the following for tax exemption and that's, I'll list the names, Stephen Brantle, Brantle, Frankel, Frederick Butler Jr., Carl Johnson, and Robert Schaefer, and they are all new veterans exemptions.
Make that motion.
Second.
Make a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Visitors' remarks. Henry Farley.
Just wait. You gotta get the timer. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Now, Duane, you can, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
If, if not, I'll, I'll ask behind the agenda for a meeting, so. Okay, America 250, this is an update for you. The committee continues to work on the calendar of events for 2025. The kickoff for Bradford County will occur November 28th, 2025 at the Sarahborough Christmas Parade. The theme for the parade will be Christmas in America. Monument Committee is busy compiling the list of Revolutionary War veterans buried in the county to be placed on the plaque to be dedicated in the Courthouse on Memorial Day, 2026. Matt Carlos preparing the historic marker booklet and updates. Hopefully we'll have our markers back by then. Liberty Bell Project, we're continuing to talk to local artists to see if somebody will step up and do a design for Bradford County Bell. This is a real opportunity for a local artist to shine. America 250 does pay the artist for the design. I believe it's $1,500. School reading program is being coordinated. The commemorative for the Commissioners, we have received a mock-up. Janine Gulyash from Senator Yaw's office is heading up the Historic Portrayal Program. This is a great way to tell our local story straight from the mouth of our first settlers. The elephant walking stick, William Salisbury had a stick and one of his descendants walked the stick to Philadelphia, Troy in 1976. We're trying to get the whole story on this because Nathan Schoonover wants to walk the stick from Philadelphia back to Bradford County in 2026. Francis Island will be hosting a Revolutionary War reenactment. Uh, there's a Sullivan's, Sullivan's March video in the works. Fireworks on the Fourth of July and celebration at the Courthouse are in the works. Uh, we've created a sponsorship letter, which I have a copy for you, uh, that will go to all businesses and organizations and available for all citizens for sponsorships for the year. Uh, we are asking for permission to mail that through the Commissioner's office since we have no money.
Yep.
Okay, um, we put our name on the list for the Traveling Daughters of the American Revolution display. They have a banner display, kinda like, remember the 67, 67 women? Yeah, almost similar to that. And they, um, uh, were on the list for that. Hopefully we can get that. We're gonna be doing a dedication at the Cole Cemetery in Tuana Township on July 4th to honor all Revolutionary War soldiers.
Will, just go ahead and finish it.
Sarah Historical Society has engaged Deb Twigg from SRIC to speak at a large venue to tell the story of Karen Tuana, Spanish Hill, and the early Native American settlers. Deb does an amazing job. Sarah Historical Society will also be dedicating their rotating exhibit room to a history of Milltown, which in the early days was part of Athens Township, and the mill there was one of the first real places of employment in the area. Commissioner Sullivan's Farm will be a century farm in 2026. We're working with him to get that designation and we'd like to do a ceremony for his century farm designation that year. The finale for the year at this point will be the Sarahborough Christmas Parade in 2027 with the theme An American Christmas Story. There'll be a lot more. This is what we're coming up with at this point, and I just asked him.
So, Henry, I got some questions for you. Could you explain a little bit better what walk the stick means?
It's a walking stick.
Walking.
It's an elephant walking stick and it, um, William Salisbury was in the Boston Tea Party and he settled in Leona era, area, and, um, it was his property. And when he died, somebody from Bradford County walked that stick to Philadelphia in, in 1976. And we're trying to find the information on it right now. We know it does exist. And also Nathan Schoonover would like to go to Philadelphia, get it and walk it back to Bradford County.
Is it the original stick?
Yes.
How old is it?
Well, 250 years old or more, you know, Boston Tea Party.
And then, um, another thing that, just for the, for the press here, March 11th, their Christmas parade, it's a, it's a, it's huge. And, um, they do such a wonderful job and it's gonna be really cool this year by the sounds of it. And then last night, Henry, we went to a, a, uh, Boy Scout troop up in, at, or Sarah rather, at the Episcopal Church Nice. And there was three Eagle Scout awards given and you said that Bradford.
First charter.
Their first charter for the Boy Scouts of America was in Troy, Pennsylvania. They, they, they're very number one. And, um, do we have it or is that in Troy, Matt? We have a picture of the group. We have a picture of the group that they had charters in Troy. So, number one in the whole United States of America.
That's amazing.
Bradford County's the first for a lot of things.
And then we had the first, um, they came through, um,
Spanish, Spanish Hill.
Yeah.
The first white man to set on foot on what is now the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Happened at Spanish Hill in Southway, Louisiana, Bradford County. This is, uh, the mock-up for, this is, this was Sarah's. Um, this would be, which look at the job they did on that.
Oh, I know.
And that'll all be, that'll all be laser cut in there. And then that would be the, the other side of it.
So I don't know who out there are YouTubers, likes to watch YouTube stuff, but there's a, there's a guy that's called Geography by Jeff, G-E-O-L. Have you ever seen it? He did that, he did one on Pennsylvania and explained, really, I thought in pretty good detail why the east and west are so completely different. Pennsylvania's a unique state. It really is. And, uh, remember, it's the fifth largest state in the nation. Not size-wise, but population-wise, so. Why Philly and Pittsburgh are so different? Really interesting.
So that's our report for right now. We're meeting monthly. It's 10 months away till 2026, so lots to do. We'll be back to bug you.
Thank you.
No, don't. Please keep us, uh, please, you're not bugging. Please keep us updated. I think it's all very interesting.
All right.
Thank you for the committee too, please.
Thank you. Hugh Austin.
Yes? Uh, just like to point out that the library is currently facing staff, imminent staff shortage that needs to be addressed to even meet the minimum, uh, hours that we are, where they are currently operated. And then I also want to point out that just on this last speaker, you showed that your, uh, policy is very arbitrary by allowing favored people to speak beyond their timeline.
I'll reserve my comment.
Thank you. James?
As far as the, the parks and, um, the, the Bradford County Parks and Regulation, basically the regulations for the Bradford County Parks for 2025, uh, there's no camp, there's, there's still no camping at, at, um,
Mount Piscata.
Mount Piscata County Park? Okay. And, and what, what's the reason for that? There was vandalism?
There were, yes, incidents of vandalism and just some things that were going on that we decided for the time being to discontinue dry camping up there.
Okay. Are there any circumstances that would allow you to, um, to, to resume it? Cause it seems like it's like it'd be, that'd be the place to go camping.
It's, it's still a matter of discussion. We haven't settled on any timeline as yet. Um, I know that there are instances where I believe scout troops have asked to
Correct.
uh, camp up there and we're allowing that unlimited, you know, when they approach us to allow the scouts, different scout troops to use that for campouts, but for the time being, public camping is not, not permitted.
Is there to be anybody that would be interesting, interested in camping there full-time through the season? That would weigh a lot on what we would do too.
To oversee the park.
Yeah, like what Libby and Larry do, but we, we haven't been able to find anybody to, to do what they do. Cause you have to have somebody there all the time. You can't.
And, and they would be paid, right?
Uh, we worked something out with them. They certainly get a campsite for free. You know, hopefully be like a snowbird or something, so. And then, anybody that's interested, have them contact us, please.
And as far as the, um, agreement between Bradford Sullivan Mental Health and the Main Link, I was wondering if there's any changes, um, in that agreement, if, if that organization is doing anything new or anything like that.
I don't believe there's any changes. I think it's pretty standard.
Okay.
Here to your agreement.
Okay, so those are the, those are my questions.
All right. Walter?
I'm gonna say again that I don't agree with the preventing of abusive and profane remarks. And I'm gonna make a point of that. Thank you for putting your stupidity in writing. It's gonna help out quite a bit in the future. The comment period should be used to address any agenda item regardless of order agreement to the comment related. Yeah. There, there's a lot in here, but also thank you for putting in the meet, the press inquiry section made by members of the press. That's actually gonna be helpful to me, especially with the comment from the solicitor. Something other than that policy. Michelle said, you said accordingly, I sent the request and the requester an extension letter on December 20th, 2024 notifying the requester that the county would be taking a 30-day extension. I believe you know what I'm talking about with that. Do you know how you sent that extension to the requester?
I, we're not, you, if you want answers, go ahead. We will answer the questions at a later time.
Okay. If you're saying you will actually answer that question later, that'd be awesome. You are being very arbitrary with your time limits with various people. It's supposed to be content neutral. Your attorney or your board member should know that it's gonna be an issue for you. Under D, under 3DI, you're saying that people can comment during the meeting. Um, I don't know if you meant to say that, but you're now allowing people to comment during the meeting, during your regular activities, your petition address or, I can't pronounce that last word. You have nothing in here really to curtail your own behavior, which is kind of a shame based upon how you've acted in the past, especially Commissioner McLanko, kind of like a child. I believe that's abusive language I just used there.
All right, your time's up. Thank you, Walter.
Oh, yeah. Finish the time, I guess. You're welcome. Oh, and a Sunshine Act violation.
Your time's up.
Sunshine Act violation of requiring 15 minutes notice before a meeting for video and audio recording of the meeting. Uh, people don't even have to tell you that you're recording.
Your time is expired. All right. Phil, do you have anything?
What is, uh, AMP Global Strategies?
It's our, our technology. They, they do all of our, a lot, I say not all, but all of our, a lot of our work on our 911 communication system, towers, antennas, radio communications, uh, the 911 dispatcher consoles.
It's, it's like really technical up there. And what we're looking at doing, which is gonna be kinda cool, is putting together a, like a video so people that wanna take tours of the facility can, it'll, it'll walk through how everything is done. I mean, it's, what, what goes on up there and what is, is, is amazing between towers and microwaves and I mean, it's just the, the 911 center. What Duane does with the, and planning and GIS and our EMA, it's, and it all comes together when there's a, when there's a, um, event. So we hope to have it, we'd love to have kids come through there and to understand what, when you dial 911, what really takes place. Or when there's a, a major event like a, you know, like a flood or a tornado or things that we've experienced.
Oh, do you guys have a contract with AMP or how does that work?
Yes. Yeah. Uh, many diff, several different contracts, quite honestly.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if that's something like it's put out for that or is it like, uh, it's like a multi-year contract or?
Yep. Well, they're year to year. Most of them are year to year, but there's a number of different contracts because there's a number of different systems involved up there.
Okay. And, uh, oh, that Bridge 15, uh, how old is the current bridge?
The current bridge is, uh, what we found out the other day, Michelle, 1910?
Laid up with stone.
It's, it's hand laid up with stone. It's a stone, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably CCC bridge.
It's worth a buyout.
Okay.
It keeps getting hit.
Yeah, that's the trouble. It keeps getting hit by tractor and trailers that probably shouldn't be trying to cross the bridge, but they do.
And, uh, when would that, uh, project start for construction?
Um, we're looking, we're hopefully looking at April.
Uh, this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, uh, it'll go up to bid this afternoon. The bid's got 30 days. And then we'll award it. So. Yep. We're looking to start it in April because we wanna try and have it finished by November.
Okay. See you. Hey, guys. One second, that's all I got.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.